Without further ado, this is the West Newbury Planning Board meeting of Tuesday, April 16th, 2024, and will get underway. We have a continued public hearing at 125 River Road. So we'll open that hearing and Sue can give us an update on the owner's request.
Yeah. Sorry, he's gonna get his email out in front of me. So the applicant has asked for that to the hearing to be continued to May 21st. They are working with the is that they met last week on site with Conservation Agent Michelle Creek to review the final portion of the wetland boundary and a survey crew was on site yesterday to survey the location of the adjusted wetland flags with the wetland boundary review completed. They will be moving toward forward with revisions requested by the planning board and the board's peer reviewer and the Conservation Commission and the commission's peer reviewer. So he believes that they will be able to provide revised plans in time for the May 21st hearing. So they would like to continue to them.
Okay. And I had asked you earlier that he wasn't doing that because I told you I would not be around for the 7th. He needs that time.
He does. He does need that time.
That's to be fair. Okay. Where does that leave us? He gave us an extension into early June. Is that correct?
I believe it was through the end of June.
End of June. Okay.
Yeah. And he said he would grant an extension to that if needed. So.
Yeah, I mean, we'll need a little time to look at the plans and Meridian as well. And there's always a few questions, a loose end. So as long as he's not expecting a vote on the 21st.
No, absolutely not.
Yeah. Okay. Anybody have a comment or objection to moving it to the 21st?
No, no objection. I was just curious. Have we got any more feedback from the other town departments, Sue?
Not any additional because we don't have revised plans yet.
Sure. Okay.
If you're interested, I will send along the Conservation Commission's peer review. Much of it is out of our scope and out of the scope of our peer reviewer, but there is some crossover in the stormwater aspect of it. It's quite lengthy, but I'm happy to pass that on if you would like.
I'd be for the stormwater aspect of it. I'd be kind of interested to see it. That's all right.
Terrific. Yep, I'll pass that on.
Yeah. I guess if there's no other substantive changes, we don't need to, you know, send it around again, but certainly the Highway Department and DPW should be able to comment.
Right.
And Meridian will give us the, you know, a full review once they have these plans.
Yes.
Okay, so I think I move to continue the hearing at 125 River Road to May 21st at 7:00 PM.
Second.
All those in favor? Brian Murphy, I.
Ray Cook, I.
All four of us.
Tim Cronin, I.
Yeah, the vote is 4-0 to continue the hearing to that timeframe. Okay, good. And now we have a few items that we had not anticipated. And I see we have Rich Hill, Hills with us, so we can cover his issue first. And I had a couple other minor items to just talk about. It really had to do with the town meeting matter. So, so Butch, you want to let us know?
The Water Department, Water Main Project is starting this week. We had a, I guess, a pre-construction meeting, brief one, last Friday. And the super got the, on the job running the equipment, pointed out some trees that need to be cut. That was the first I heard about it was Friday.
And one of those. You just heard too, but yeah.
Yeah, no, I just heard about it Friday. We had another walkthrough today. And it come up again. And that's why I'm here. They're gonna start digging Thursday up at the intersection of Main and Church and then work their way down. So there might be a few days getting here. But it won't be the four weeks that we need. And like I say, it was, it's a water project. I had nothing to do with the planning or laying out anything. And it just came to my attention Friday. So here I am.
No, we're glad you're here to talk.
Yeah.
The, no, let me, let me just back up. Are you still the acting tree warden?
No, I am it.
You, oh, you're officially it?
Yeah, as of November 1st.
I'm sorry. Yeah, whatever.
No problem. Yeah, November 1st.
Do you know, or maybe Sue knows, I mean, is, in his capacity as, you know, the DPW and the tree warden? Do we need to go through the protocol of the scenic roads? You know, with a project like this? And so does anybody know what the proper?
Oh, I have a question. Are these trees all in the public right of way?
Yes, I took some pictures this morning. I sent them to Sue. Right now, if you, if you see the pictures, you'll see the curb line and you'll see the base of the tree. The water main is going in that area. So that's what four foot area it looks like, something like that. The main is going right there. So any root system between the edge of the road, the curb line and the tree is going to get cut. Then they're going probably six to seven feet down on that one side of the tree. And on the backside of the tree, it drops off about three to four feet.
And it looked, looks to me like those might be ash trees. Is that correct?
Not an ash tree. It might be like a basswood tree.
Okay.
And it, it could be, it doesn't look like an ash to me. It's not tagged.
Yeah, it does. It has some pink, some paint on it. Did that just happen now, though? It has a mark painted on it.
Yeah. I didn't paint, I wrapped a piece of caution tape around it in case somebody wanted to drive out by it.
I had just, it had already been flagged to be taken down by some other entity. You see there, next stem over has it as well, Ray.
Now, is that on Church Street?
Yes. It's across from 31 Church, opposite 31 Church.
Thank you.
I mean, I don't know the protocol, so I'm not going to pretend that I do. I would say as a practical matter, a tree with that many stems and a lean toward the road that's in the way of a water main, you know, it seems like.
If Sue, Sue has a picture of the top of the tree and you can see where some of the limbs are starting to break off, like at the top.
Yeah, that's what I'm wondering if it's an ash tree.
Yeah, it's starting to die.
Yeah.
So and then, like I say, if we, like I say, it's not my job. I just, the water project, I just found out about this Friday. I just, you know, wanted to bring it up. It does look like in a year or so, it'll probably be dead and have to come down anyway.
I mean, I'm not opposed, you know, we don't want to certainly hold this up for this reason, but maybe we can, you know, bless this and Sue can just do some research. It's more on the legal side of things. But, you know, just to be sure that we're kind of crossing the Ts and dotting the Is going forward.
Yeah.
And it may be, Butch, it may be in your purview as tree warden with this project that you can do this.
Yeah.
That'd make life a lot easier for us.
Yeah, I, I want to say that I really do very much appreciate the fact that you're being cautious about it and you're checking it out. We'll all end up being better educated because of it. I'm looking, I'm looking kind of a street view of it. And, you know, it, it was alive whenever this street view picture was taken, although there is some dying off in the top. And, and it doesn't matter where you take a tree down in town, somebody's going to be upset about it. So it makes sense that we do this by the book. The other thing I'll mention, though, I mean, if, you know, if the water main can't handle tree roots, then we're in big trouble because there are just, there's trees all over the place along this route. And so there's going to be roots all over the place. And, and by the way, I, it's my personal experience. I've heard it over and over again. You know, you take out these roots and the tree is going to die. If you're within so many feet of the trunk, the tree is going to die. And often that's not the case. The tree doesn't die. But I don't, I don't object. I don't, I see the need here. I don't have a particular objection in this case. I'm just, just rambling on about things that come to mind here. And as I, as I kind of street view up and down Church Street, it looks to me like there are going to be lots of other trees in the same sort of category.
We did a walkthrough today. There was that one. There's one up above it. That's a tagged ash tree, which is dead.
All right, good.
And up at the top of the hill, halfway up the top of the hill is a, by the field, there's a maple tree. That's probably 90% dead. And then there's a couple other small trees that, that have to come down.
Well, it's a shame to lose that maple. But I do, one of the trees that I already saw was that ash. So I'm glad you, you pulled that out.
Yeah, that's a, that's a tagged tree, ready to go.
Yeah. Oh, maybe this is, maybe this is the tree you're talking, the maple you're talking about. It doesn't look so healthy.
Yeah, the roadside's got a dead big hole in it, about seven, eight feet up.
Yeah.
And it's like lost a leader.
Yeah. I mean, this, this is, this is one of those things where, you know, it's a shame you have to take out some trees, but the water main matters, you know?
So I think what we do, we'll, 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 we'll take a vote to allow this to proceed and we'll ask Sue to just double check and advise the rest of the board. And you, Butch, you know, where, you know, if, if we need some further notification in the future and, you know, that we take the right action, but.
Like, like I said, this has been, the draw's been in the planning through the Water Department. And I've just been like included within the last, I don't know, probably six weeks. But this was last Friday was the first I heard of any trees being happened to taken out, be taken out.
Yeah. Well, and the reason, and, you know, you don't have to hang around, but one of the items I wanted to talk about, we've, we have a fellow on Carfen Street who took out a tree in Stonewall.
Yeah.
And, you know, we had him in at a prior meeting to talk about, you know, some remedial action.
Yeah. I hear you. I know what you're talking about.
You know?
Yeah, we have to play both sides of the.
Well, yes, you, you know, you don't want to come down with a hammer on somebody and then say the town can just go off and do whatever the heck they want either.
Yeah.
This is a fair, fair play on both, both sides.
Yeah, no, I understand.
Yeah. So.
Brian, would it be a fair request to, to ask that once we do get the clarification through that we share that information with the Water Department?
Yes, yes. Yes, you're, you're right.
Just a thought.
I, I don't, I, I was gonna say something, but I won't. It's not a good thing.
Should, do you, do you want to make a formal motion on, on this particular tree?
Yeah.
Actually, why, why don't I make the motion?
Right ahead.
That the hill, the, the trees mentioned by Mr. Hills necessary for the proper construction of the water main along Church Street, that we approve having them taken down? Yeah, so we approved having them taken down.
And Ray, I just maybe suggest a friendly amendment. I was just looking at the policy and it looks like the recommendation of the town tree warden is kind of key here. So, you know, if it's okay, I'd just say based on the recommendation of the town tree warden.
Excellent. Yes.
A second. Okay, all those in favor?
Ray Cook, I.
Tim, Tim Cronin, I.
Vote is 4-0.
And I note, Mr. Hills, that, that it wasn't just that tree. With this vote, we approve the other ones that you mentioned up along Church Street.
All right, cool. Thank you.
Whether or not you actually needed us to approve it.
Right. No, I appreciate it.
And we'll, Sue will be coordinating and we'll keep you in the loop. But really, thank you very much for the heads up and taking your time to, to join us.
All right, no problem. Have a good night.
Thank you.
Bye. Oh, thank you. Bye bye.
Okay, well, we'll, we'll look into that. And I guess that segues into my item.
We just lost Brian.
Oh, yeah. Hope a crocodile didn't get him. Is it crocodile or alligators?
Son must have gone over the yardarm somewhere. I hope that happened.
I think it's alligators in Florida.
It is, where it's wet.
And snakes, invasive snakes.
Lots of them.
Have you heard about that down in the Everglades?
Yeah.
They've even got bounties out for them.
Yeah.
Ones that people had as pets, that whole thing.
Yeah, yeah. You know, now that I'm retired from being an engineering professor, maybe I'll head down there.
Bounty hunter?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. That sounds pretty cool. Ray Cook, snake bounty hunter.
Yeah, get a cool hat, you know?
Yeah, yeah. Kind of channel my.
I told you, my connection is unstable down here.
Yes, yes.
We'll, we'll try to move this along quickly. Did we hear anything from the fellow on Carfen Street? Has he come by to pick up an application?
We have not, I have not heard anything. I gave him the, the application and was pretty clear about what he needed to do, but I have not heard anything. So I'm happy to follow up.
Yeah. Did you reach out to Sam to make him aware of, you know, that we had him in and what we recommended to him?
Yes, Sam and Michelle.
Okay. All right. Yeah, it wouldn't hurt to just remind him, just a friendly reminder. Any other item I think that we wanted to just chat about was, well, two things. I don't know if that note went around to the rest of the board about this article on the town meeting that Angus wanted our input on?
I did, I did not. The one from Wendy?
Yes. Can you maybe describe it briefly to the board?
Sure, sure. Wendy sent a note to Brian and I this morning to let us know that they were going forward with putting in a placeholder warrant article for to continue the work of the MBTA communities to get it through the next town meeting. However, they've shifted the, the focus a bit to allow the work to, to assess whether a 40R district is a viable alternative, either for the sites that we're looking at or for the MBT, or for the Mullen site. So kind of broaden it. And she did point it out that that would be under the auspices of the, the Select Board with Angus taking the lead on that, but that they wanted the planning board's input. So I don't know what they'll want for that interface, but if you look at the town meeting report, you'll, you'll see it in there. I know, or not the town meeting report, the warrant, you'll notice how it's, how it's worded.
Huh.
Right?
Yeah, I, I did not read the fine print. I didn't have a moment today to do that. But offhand, I don't really have a problem with it. We were looking for funding anyway to, to keep Dodson and Flinker in the loop. To the point, we don't know where the, the rulings that may come from Milton and it, perhaps some clarity on 40R will come about as well. I don't necessarily have an objection to including language to that effect. It doesn't mean we have to do it. It's just seeking that opportunity to look at it.
Brian or Sue, would this be, you know, supervised by the planning board, I'm presuming?
I think that was unclear for me. It sounded pretty clear from, from Wendy's email that Angus would be the lead on behalf of the Select Board and they were looking for planning board input. So I don't know if there are two simultaneous lines of work, one that's doing the outreach and then one that's doing the technical, or if the Select Board feels that because they're in charge of the Mullen property that there needs to be something. I'm, I'm not really sure. I haven't been part of those conversations. So I'm not quite sure how they would see that breakout of work and if it follows the line of what this board might be thinking of in terms of moving forward with outreach.
Well, I think it would be good for us to know, but I also think there will be questions about that at town meeting. You know, is it going to be some money to the planning board to continue on the MBTA route? Which would make sense to me. But then maybe also hiring Dodson and Flinker under a separate contract to explore 40R and Mullen and other housing uses in town under someone else's auspices? Because then there isn't really another entity that looks at zoning or housing other than us. So.
And I'm not sure if it, I'm not sure it would be if, if Dodson and Flinker would be the selected consultants for that work. I don't know that they wouldn't be, but I don't know if it's, if that's a given.
It sounds like two articles to me, is what it sounds like.
Yeah.
Yeah, I wish we had the answer here. And, you know, here we are, you know, we just have town meeting coming forward. I, I will seek some clarity and send a note to everybody. You know, if I hear something this week, it's probably more likely early next week from Angus, but you know.
It, this, I'm, I'm gonna speak frankly here. It strikes me, it strikes me as the sort of thing where there was a group in town that was unsatisfied and so they're, you know, they're putting pressure on the selectmen and the selectmen are reacting perhaps too quickly because, I mean, we've been at this for a year and a half. And to suddenly jump in and, and it, it seems like an ill-advised political response to me. And, you know, I, I'm fine. It's not a turf battle thing. It's, it's just, it, it strikes me as clouding the issue. It could confuse the message.
I think it's incredibly.
Yeah. Sue will forward this note out to everybody. Okay. Any, from Wendy and Angus. But it did appear that it would take Mr. Baker's proposal off the table. He had, I think the fine print in there somewhere was he'd be willing to move no action or something on that if this was included in some fashion.
Yeah, but that's just what Ray said. That's just political pressure.
I, I, yeah, I, I mean, I read it and then, you know, I got running around with the kids or something. I, I really don't know. You know, I saw it a couple of hours, three hours ago.
It sounds murky. And if I were, frankly, I think Dodson and Flinker are a very professional and ethical outfit. And I do not think, I think they're going to have all these same questions and be very leery of it.
Yeah. I mean, it may, you know, I know Angus thinks, has thought very highly of their work.
Oh, no, I know. I just think this is a new RFP that maybe they should wait and see what, to extend Ray's thought, let's see what happens. We've hung our hat on let's see what happens at fall time meeting if they want to propose an article to issue an RFP to study 40R, Mullen, other housing matters in town. I B L for.
Well, what we will do is I will get an answer from Angus and/or Wendy, forward it around. And so we don't have an ongoing, you know, you can comment back to myself or to Sue, and we will relay those to Angus and Wendy. I don't know a better way to do it, other than trying to have another meeting before a town meeting, but.
No, I mean, no, you gotta go to advocates, you know? No.
Yeah, yeah. I, I, there may be more to this than Sue and I know.
Right. I'm sure there is.
May I also just bring up, I received an email from Judy Tymon, who's the, kind of the head of the new, the Housing Coalition?
Yes.
I got an email from her that says, "The Coalition is ready and willing and able to help with advocacy for the MBTA for West Newbury, even though it looks like you have postponed the vote. We have advocates currently working in Newbury to get out the vote in that town. Chappa has had a lot of experience with advocacy and we can work with them to provide assistance, either through a meeting with advocates in West Newbury or a Zoom call with advocates, whatever you think would work best. Let me know what your timeframe is." And I just said, you know, I thanked him and said, after we talked about it with the board, we'd let them know. But I appreciate their willingness to help with the advocacy.
Yeah. And yeah, thank you. And, you know, we have your number.
Exactly.
Politely. Yeah. I mean, maybe, who knows? Maybe that'll be helpful in the spring.
Right.
We, you know, if, as, if the world turns in the direction where you gotta do this, well, it might not be a bad, you know, to have some extra advertising help or whatever. But.
No, I think we're way ahead of all that whole crew on this.
Yes.
Good. Okay.
Yeah. So, okay. So again, apology, apologies for this odd request. And we don't know a lot about it, but now you know what we know and we'll send that note to you and you'll still be scratching your head like I am.
I just sent it.
And if, feel free to, even from that, send a couple comments to the two of us. That's fine. So, okay. So to my last point on anticipated items, do we need to do or want to do a brief report about the MBTA at town meeting? And, and just to take advantage of the audience?
I, I think it would make sense. I think, I think, you know, so that we've, you know, a little background, we've done all this work. We've held all these meetings and, and because of the things that you just mentioned, Brian, you know, the pending legal cases and, you know, and, and because we don't have to come up with something just yet, that we've decided to be more prudent to wait before, you know, proposing an article to the town. I think people need to know that, that, you know, we're, we're not just kicking the can here.
Yeah.
No, they also need to know that, that we stand behind the work we've done and that the work we've done has been considerable and that we intend to bring this forward pending any minor changes that may come out as a result of the lawsuit, you know, and not make it look like we've just gone and hidden away because of the bluster of the others.
Yeah, I think phrasing it so as a, you know, I, I like the idea of reinforcing all the work we've done and whatnot, but also emphasizing that we have listened to people and we, we've posted certain elements that have been requested and there's still more to come from the commentary. But, you know, it's, this is also to an audience that some folks, frankly, may not even be aware of.
No, and some are supporters and we don't want them to think that we.
Yes, and we don't want them to feel like we're hiding under a rock. So I, I think, again, Sue and I will collaborate on a
Thank you.
an executive summary, you know, without going into mind-numbing detail, but, but probably just lifting, consolidating some of our frequently asked questions and whatnot. You know, a few minutes to give this report, maybe early in the, early on. So.
Yes, maybe early on. Yeah, if they call for reports.
We will circulate a draft for people.
Yeah. And, and when, it didn't even occur to me that you would consider doing it at any other time than right at the opening of the meeting.
Yes.
I think the problem. I think that probably makes sense. Why, why wait and put it before, although.
Oh, no. Yeah, I think early diffuses, diffuse like immediately.
Yeah.
Before they sit there getting all wound up about the full thing.
Exactly, exactly. And they always reserve that spot.
Yes, yes. Is that okay with you, Sue? I'll, I'll, I'll put some thoughts together and I, I'm back, uh, early on Friday. I know you're not, but I'll, we'll probably start tackling this on Monday.
Sounds good.
That's okay?
Yeah.
Well, oh, it's 7:30. It's, it's longer than I thought.
It's still a world's record.
We don't have minutes.
I'm so grateful for this because I have to get up early and find my way to Salem.
Uh-oh. Oh, boy.
Yeah.
Oh, boy.
Jury duty?
Jury duty. I was hopeful this was gonna be down in New York, but.
Oh, gosh.
Well, they're, they, they are looking for a few good people, I think.
They got seven already.
Yeah, yeah.
That's really fast.
So here was a correspondent from Haverhill. Yeah.
Yes, one is to reduce the parking requirement. And let's see.
Exciting.
The other one was for the other one was for adding a constructive bedroom addition in their watershed.
Right, right.
I'm just glad.
Check all the boxes.
Glad things are happening in April. I think that's right.
Okay. Anybody have anything else they, they'd like to add or chat about? No? Okay, so, uh, there'll be some activity back and forth on the topics that we've discussed here tonight and, uh, we'll I, I do intend to go to the town meeting. I don't know if they, have they set a date for like the second night? Is it still looking like a two-nighter?
Um, you know, I haven't been in on any meetings. I, I think that they, I think it's the, the next night was my understanding. If that's what they would do, but I, I know they cut back on some of them and if they cut out, you know, a couple of the Mr. Baker doesn't, you know, close his back.
I haven't even looked at the article.
There's still a lot of them out there.
Thirteen.
We'll see.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, uh, motion to adjourn.
Second.
Second. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Tim Cronin, aye.
Pretty good stuff.
Hey, you watch out, now watch out because there's snakes and alligators down there.